I'd like to call to order the Smyrna Planning Commission for April 2018. And at this time, I ask that if you would, please stand for a prayer and pledge.
Pray. Father, we come to you today, Lord, just feeling blessed to live in a town, Smyrna, here, and, Father, we ask you to continue to help us have good guidance and make good decisions that works out for the welfare of our citizens and our town in general. We pray that you continue to protect those that protect us, our police and fire departments, and, Father, the employees of our town that were working out in the field every day or here in the office, Lord, they're all part of a bigger picture for our city, and we just appreciate you, each and every one of them. Be with this body tonight as we deliberate this business, continue to watch over us, and forgive us where we fail you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No citizens' comments at this time?
Right.
Moving on to item number four, election of officers. Normally, turn it over to our good counselor for this item. You would take over, please.
Yes, Chairman. So, we'll be electing a vice chair and a chair. So, we will begin with the chair, and I'll be taking nominations for chair of the planning commission.
I'd like to nominate Ed Davenport.
Have a nomination for Ed Davenport. Do we have any further nomination?
If the motion nomination ceases.
Have a motion nomination cease, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, back on the main motion, those in favor of Mr. Davenport as the chairman say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Second, we have the vice chair. I'll be nominations for vice chair of the planning commission.
Nominate Tim Morrell.
Have a nomination for Tim Morrell. Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, vote on the one nomination. Those in favor of Tim Morrell, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out? If not, they'll have a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item six, new business annexation plan of services. Item one, Sean Collins, staff comments.
Yes, this is a first request is at 6690 Ammerville Road, it's at the corner of Ammerville Road and Independent Hill Road. This is just south of a parcel that was annexed and zoned R3 pretty recent last few months. So, this is a very similar request, about 7.6 acres of property. Again, the requested zoning is R3. The surrounding zoning is consistent with R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Our land use plan would support an office, retail, multifamily mix in this area as you're getting closer to the A-40 interchange. Similar to the previous request, similar plan of services. Again, CUD does provide water here, but we would provide everything else. And there is, the sewer is still, for this would be dependent on the sewer for the adjoining PRD development that we have the development agreement with, that we're going to develop it, the Limwood Development there. So, it'd be, again, very same plan of services that we have for the adjoining parcel to the north as well. I think that's all that I've got.
Y'all have questions of staff? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move we recommend the annexation and zoning to R3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number two, under annexation plan of services, Sean Collins, different tract, staff comments.
This is a request, similar request as far as annexation with an R3 zoning attached. It's three separate tracts of property. Three tracts together total by 30.3 acres. They are 78 Oates, 7840, and 7798 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road is how they're addressed. The surrounding zoning is all RM in Rutherford County, as well as the adjacent PRD of the Amberton, which is to the east. And this land use plan would support medium-density residential development, so this is consistent with our land use plan. This is, does have road frontage on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road, it's south and east of some of the developments that are properties that have been annexed recently on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. And it does abut the city directly to the east, which is where the Amberton Development is located. So, it is contiguous to the city limits there. We did not recommend annexation of the road, frontage, at this time. But, to do, if we did so, we would, if we connected to where our city limits currently in on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road, we would have surrounded about six tracts of land that were not requested to be annexed. So, we are not recommending any, anything other than the annexation of the three parcels that have been requested. So, I guess that's all I have.
Okay. Do y'all have questions concerning this request?
Chairman and Mindy, if you would, make a note that I'm not going to be taking place in the vote or discussion.
Is it foreseeable that the only access will be Rocky Fork Ammerville Road on this? I notice, I'm looking at INES, the top portion there.
I would anticipate that INES Drive would extend through into this development and would have access in both directions.
Okay.
Yeah. Because INES Drive is being extended through Amberton and to this property line, so, to this easternmost property line.
Well, then, I think it'd be appropriate, then, if the annexation goes through and it is approved by council, that we consider looking at our major thoroughfare map, because I think that could be a pretty important connection right there.
Yeah, because you could connect Rocky Fork Ammerville and Ammerville together. INES does come all the way to Ammerville Road, so.
And somewhat take out a pretty big curve in there, too. So, if it's approved, then y'all could bring something back to us on that.
Okay.
Very good.
We have a motion on this. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'm going to move we approve.
Do we have a second? We were doing better. Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to recommend annexation and the R3 zone. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business, item B, master plan, Woodmont subdivision. This is an amendment to their master plan. Staff comments?
This is just an amendment. This is a kind of really a tweak of the approved master plan for Woodmont. This doesn't change the maximum overall density at all, doesn't change the significant roadways. Still, all the connections that we had approved previously are all still being made with this. It does change the, some of the internal streets somewhat. So, it does, it is an amendment in that regard. And it does, it's basically, it's just amending really phases eight, nine, and 10. Phase eight has already had a preliminary plat approval. With this amendment, the next two items on your agenda is to amend, to resubmit a revised preliminary plats for phase eight to reflect this master plan. Again, it just really, it's altering some of the road and lot layout, but it's really not changing the main overall density or the main overall traffic pattern, so.
Is it motivated as much by what? The topo of the property once it got in?
I think, I think that's partially, some of the lots are, some of these lots are going to be a little bit narrower than what they had approved previously, because they had some lot layout, they lost some lots in some of the other sections from topo and whatnot, so they're trying to pick some of those back up and.
Similar number of lots is what was approved?
Yes. The overall density, it's still, for the overall, the entire development, most of which is, not most, probably half of it is already built, it's 825 units, that's the townhomes and the lots together. And so, that's not changing this at all, so.
These are all, this only involves single family.
This is all single family detached.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
With staff comments.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thanks. All right. Item C, preliminary plats, Woodmont. Staff comments?
Yeah, phase, this is, we have the phase eight, they've had it in a couple of different sections. This is section A, which again, it's consistent with the master plan you just looked at. It's 24.05 acres, 84 lots. We basically had four comments that were left, three are pretty standard comments, and then we asked them to show all the utility and drainage easements, including the stormwater pipe locations and sizes. So, just need, they still need to make that change. You know, other than that, it's consistent, you all have, again, looked at this before. It's really, it's the same area, it's just the lot layout and road layout changed a little bit, so they have asked for reapproval of it. And we would recommend approval with those four conditions.
This is for eight, correct?
It's phase eight, yes.
Section A.
Yeah, there's.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve with staff comments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, under preliminary plats.
Yeah, this is just the phase eight of section B of Woodmont. Again, consistent with the revised master plan, it's 11.7 acres, 40 lots, same four comments we had on the previous plat, were on for this plat as well, and so we would recommend those be a part of the approval. Again, it had been approved once before, and this is just a reapproval to be consistent with the revised plan that they wanted to put in place, so.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Are all these roads that are shown in the gray area, public roads?
Yes, and this, all these roads will be public, yes.
Because I went to a meeting about two weeks ago, and the area where the townhomes are, there's a private road.
That's true, yes.
Is there a reason for having a private road?
That's typical in most townhome developments, is that they are, the roads are private. You, a lot of times, you have parking off of those, and there's, and really, the, there's an, the association within those townhomes maintains their amenities, as well as the roadways and parking areas and that sort of thing.
Anything else more? Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Preliminary plats, number three, Blakeney subdivision, phase one.
This is a plat, or resubmital of a plat that y'all had looked at last month, and they have resubmitted it to try and address some of the comments and discussion that we had last month. This is section one of the Pete Blakeney PRD. It's 16.27 acres, 55 lots, on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. There were several comments, most of those are, are standard comments. They have, we can take off number five, and then, there were some grading comments, 13, 17, and 18 can all be taken off. The, the main concern last month, this is, the plat itself is very similar to what you looked at last month. There's really no changes really at all to the, to the layout of the section one of this development. The main discussion last month was regarding Morton Lane and the realignment of Morton Lane. That was something that was discussed when the zoning came in and annexation zoning took place. They have showed the proposal, C 1.0 kind of shows the overall master plan of the development, as well as the realignment of Morton Lane. It would bring, straighten Morton Lane to where it become, would come into Rocky Fork Ammerville Road perpendicular. It would actually go directly, will be, in phase two of this development, there would be a road that would come directly off of that as well. However, the proposal is to, that those improvements would be completed as a part of phase one. And then, once that is done, the, the existing Morton Lane would, would go away. And so, you would correct the, the issue that existed without that change being done, where they're coming in at an odd, or Morton Lane, existing Morton Lane, and where the road comes in for phase one is at a, at an odd angle there and at an odd intersection. So, they're more than willing to do that improvement, again, as part of phase one, that all would, would take place before the, the completion of phase one and permits being issued and that sort of thing. So, to us, that, they really addressed, to us, in our recollection, anyway, the main concern last month would be addressed with that being done, so. Again, we had, there's several comments there, there are a lot of standard comments from CUD and some different things. The main issue, I guess, with the road improvements has been addressed.
Are the Morton Lane improvements part of phase one?
Yes. Even though the, there is a phase two that would be constructed, that would be a more direct access, the improvements themselves are going to be done as a part of the development of phase one.
Which would provide a turn and a stacking and room to make a right on Morton coming out of phase one?
Correct. It's about a, about four, almost 400 feet offset between the road that goes into phase one and the relocated Morton Lane.
So, is that part of this plat, or just part of this plats approved?
It's an offsite improvement that would be required as a part of the approval. And they have, I believe it's on, yes, sheet, C2, kind of has a little bit more of the, the design, the right of way, and what those improvements would look like more, instead of in big picture, more of the, the actual improvements, the construction plans. We'll still have, we don't have, this set doesn't have all the, the actual profiles and all that, but at least it shows the, the right of way and all that.
Last month, Kevin, there was some discussion on, or last time, on whether they own the property across the road, and there was some hiccup with that, do they own that over there to do this improvement?
I know that, I don't know if they own it yet, I know they've been talking with that property owner about acquiring the property, they might can answer that.
Well, if they can't do it, then they can't do phase.
Yeah. If you make it a part of the approval of phase one, if that doesn't work out, then they'll, they'll have to figure something else out and come back to you. They might can answer that question.
We've had something similar to this before with another property, where there was a request, and there was going to be a reworking of the road, and ultimately, it failed. And so, and I think this was around Chicken Pike area.
Or is it roundabout?
Roundabout, yeah.
Chicken Pike, you're right.
And so, what ended up happening is they came back, and I think ultimately, they had obtained access off of Old Nashville Highway.
Correct.
And I guess, you know, my concern, and I want to try to figure out where we are in a time phase, is how do we avoid going back down that rabbit hole again?
Yeah, because there's not another option here. I mean, this is, there's only the one, there's not frontage on another road, or potential frontage on another road, really. So, yeah, I don't know that there's, beyond having some assurances from them that they've obtained the property or something like that, there's not, there's, there's no other way, there's no other road for them to provide or get another access to, unless they buy some additional property somewhere else that they can't acquire this one. They bought an adjacent property and came out at a different location or something, or completely reconfiguring their development so that that road goes away. As far as the road in phase one that comes into the development, I mean, or gets relocated to another location.
Can we require that they show the ownership and have that part bonded before, before they move forward? Not that it's done, but they show that they have it, and we know that it's going to be done.
Of course, you still have a final plat, they couldn't really get going until they had a final plat approval either, so you could require that before they give a final plat approval that they've got. Because there's got to be right of way. Right of way's got to be dedicated.
I can only speak for myself, but I can assure you, I won't be voting for it if it's not here with final plat approval, even if the whole subdivision is built.
The, the final plat, there's going to have to be right of way purchased and dedicated to the town in some form or fashion, which would make sense to do it with a final plat that's, or we could do it by deed or whatever, but.
In other words, are we making, are we actually making that part of this plat that is being approved, rather than just a comment?
I think it's a, whether it's a part of the plat to ever gets recorded, I don't know, but it certainly would be a part of the plat approval.
Okay.
They would be required to make that improvement. And if they can't make that improvement, then they, the plat approval is, that's a condition of the approval, so if they can't make that improvement, then they would have to come back before you all with some other plan of action.
Well, speaking just for me, I mean, I don't have an issue with the way that this is proposed. If we, if anything came back where we were anywhere near the alignment that we show right now without some type of substantial change to phase one, where we didn't have this kind of odd type intersection, then it wouldn't be, you know, I just couldn't see approving it. But if, if you're asking me, and, and this is part of the final plat, then, you know, I don't have an issue with, with what's being proposed here.
Yeah, I appreciate what they brought back. I think it's real close to what we, or almost exactly what we asked for. We just want to make sure that it can be built. And I assume there's somebody here listening to us, and you understand, please come forward. Yes, name and address, please, sir.
Thomas Stephan, 2925 Berry Hill. So, what we've got, we've got an agreement in principle with the owners to do the work. And what I had suggested with Kevin was that we would dedicate this as part of our final plat for phase one. Install it, construct it, turn it over to the city as part of phase one. So, we would have all the, the money and the ground for the infrastructure, the roads, curbs, everything, including the realignment, before any building permit could be approved, before the map was recorded.
I, I would advise caution in spending money on the rest of the project until you have this locked up and for sure.
Yes, as part of our moving forward, we needed to have this preliminary plat approved, so.
The other thing, I have another request that I would like for you to consider in the future, is for phase two to probably be your next phase after phase one, and that you go ahead and connect it to have phase one and phase two connect. That takes a little bit of phase four, the way it's drawn on the preliminary, so that this subdivision could have a direct access.
Multiple points in ingress and egress.
Yes.
Sure.
And it tie up phase one and phase two together, and make it much easier just to go straight across Morton than have to come out and turn right.
Right. Yeah, and that's what our thought process when we're going through the PRD.
So, so we are going to be looking at that when you bring in next sections. Because I think, yeah, phase two and phase one is separated by a short strip on, of phase four, it looks like, from, from the master here. So, we just, we're going to be looking for that when, when the next phase comes in.
It works utility-wise that way as well.
All right. Any other comments?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have anything else?
I've got a little concern about the road coming from Ammerville Road. If somebody's traveling from Ammerville Road up Rocky Fork towards phase one, towards Morton, that road kind of has a rise and a turn in it, all at the same time. I was out in that area this week, actually coming from the other direction, and it's tough to see from where this phase one road is, and where Rocky, or where Morton currently runs in it. And nobody drives the speed limit out there on that road. So, if they top that hill at 45 or 50, which most people, most people drive fairly aggressive out there, if somebody's pulling out of that phase one, we could potentially have some wrecks in that area. It is a, it's a little hill and a turn. The turns kind of showed here on the map, but it's, it's pretty, pretty tight right there to Morton, if you're coming from Ammerville Road, up the road. And that moving Morton, it definitely helped phase two, but it doesn't help coming out of phase one. I don't know if y'all have been out on, you know, the Rocky Fork Road lately, especially from Ammerville Road to top that hill.
If anyone, where the road's, because there's a little bit of a blind spot coming from Ammerville Road.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And not also, not only do you come up a hill, you also make a turn, that, that turn back to the right, and I know the speed limit's 30 or 35 out there, but if you're doing 30 or 35, you're going to get the horn blowed at you. My concern is people coming out of that subdivision, turning and then not accelerating, but actually just kind of, you know, getting up enough speed to turn back on Morton. That's a lot of time for them to be on the road, that somebody tops that hill going faster than they should be, which they're going to. And I used to live out there, so I know that road fairly well. The main road has not changed. I don't know if they're going to put any lanes in for getting in and out of traffic, or, you know, for that hill there. or, you know, for that hill there, but it is a blind spot when you top that hill and the turn, the combination of the two. And you're right, I mean, it's three or four hundred feet there, but a car traveling at forty-five or fifty can cover that ground pretty quick. That's my concern about phase one where the road's in it.
If you can have them take a look at that with their construction plans as far as site distance and make sure they're meeting requirements, I mean, something, I mean, Tom's here, he's hearing that comment. They can make sure of that before final plat.
You adding that as a comment?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
There's not a lot of shoulder there either on those older roads out there.
How much of that city str, how much of Rocky Fork is gonna be city street?
We, I think all, all of that area where this subdivision is, we did annex that when we annexed. Well, all down to, fast for that area where their detention pond and all that is. So we, that is city street right there. Once you go further out, it's not, but.
Does it stop before you get back to Brawley?
Certainly, I think it does.
Yeah, I think it does, yeah.
Okay.
So we do have some control over that, a portion of it anyway, right? Okay? Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve with staff comments and notation. I think it's already in the staff comments, but, uh, the requirement, no COs to be given until the road improvement's been made.
All right.
The Morton Lane road improvement.
Anything else? Do I have a second?
Second.
And that includes Mike's?
Yeah.
Comments?
Yes.
Road improvement. All right. We have a motion and a second, uh, to approve preliminary plat. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thank you for working with us on that. That's a, that's a big improvement. Okay, moving on, under new business, item C, final plats, uh, number one, five oh three, Ennis Springs Road West. Steph comments?
Yeah, this is a final plat, two lots and an R4 subdivision, point four four acres. Typically a two lot subdivision is one that we can approve administratively. However, this one, uh, has an issue that you all would have to look at. The lot two, which is a lot that fronts on Frank Street, it's about six hundred and thirty-five feet from the nearest fire hydrant. Five hundred feet is the maximum allowed by the subdivision reg, regulations. They really don't have an opportunity to add a fire hydrant. The water line there is only two inches in diameter. You have to have at least a six inch water line to, to put a fire hydrant in, so. The nearest hydrant is actually next to the fire station, which is located east of Weekly Street. If you go east from the, from Frank Street, cross Weekly Street, and that's where the fire station is, so. Lot one, there's no issue at all. There's a fire hydrant there at the intersection of, uh, or actually just west of the intersection there of Venus Springs and Weekly. So that's, there's not an issue at all for lot one. But lot two, it does, there is an issue, a hundred and thirty-five feet over the, the maximum, so. Which will, would basically require a waiver from the sub regs, so. That's why it's in front of you all, so. Everything else with the plat is, is in order, not an issue at all, just that one issue, so.
Has there been any conversation with Chief Coberson? For his staff?
Yeah, well, I did, he asked and he recommended that their, the plat not be approved.
This is the Habitat home, correct?
It is.
And this is what we ask him, we, we talk to him about initially so that from a traffic flow perspective and being able to access each.
That, and also the, to make the lots, they could, they could meet our sub regs by rotating the lots so that they're very, both very long and narrow. You would end up with lots less than fifty feet wide, so they're very, they'd be very narrow houses and probably would still require variances from the BZA on some side setbacks, probably. So, cause you would lose the two lots, each lot having a side setback of ten. You have forty of your ninety-seven point six six feet gets taken out by side setbacks, an average scenario. So you have to be very narrow homes. Could be done, but be pretty narrow and long and narrow lots, so.
What's on there now? Is it one house that?
There was a house that has actually been torn down. It was in very bad condition and, uh, they've already tore it down.
So it was one lot at that time?
It was one lot. It was one lot, one house on the one lot that they purchased.
So what are you doing as a pod where there's one lot, but, but would allow for two houses?
I mean, yeah, I guess you could do that, I guess. I think ultimately though, they do wanna sell these, you know, and maybe, I mean, you could sell a house and have a, some sort of HOA deal where they, each house owns the rest of the lot or something. I guess you could do that, but that's, that might be tough to do, I guess.
That was more of a question than a recommendation, for sure.
Well, it's a hundred and seventy-seven feet to the hydrant at the intersection, to the front house, correct?
Correct. It's just lot two is the only con, issue, cause even if you.
From that same fire hydrant, even though they'd have to go through the yard.
Oh, it's less than five hundred feet.
Or requires.
To the, to lot two, if you come from that hydrant, you just had to go through somebody's backyard and their backyard.
Is there some type of easement we could require?
What's wrong with that?
To solve that?
I mean, yeah, you could require some sort of access easement or something like that that would allow for.
Fire department easement.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna ask.
It wa, where, it's not allowed to be fenced. They have to keep it open where it could.
You could get through there, yeah.
Can we do it that way?
I think you could do it that way. I mean, you've got, it's required from the, it's not, you still technically would have to create a waiver because our ordinance requires it to be five hundred feet along the road frontage of the lot, so.
Well, here's the deal. If this was, if they were building the house on lot two, if it was one lot and they were building their house on lot two and not on lot one.
It wouldn't be an issue because you'd still be less, it wouldn't be an issue.
Right, cause you're going through your own yard.
You'd be going through your own property, right.
So I see it pretty much the same.
I, that's where I'm trying to get to, is that we just, no fence and.
And, and let's face it, Habitat provides a very great service and we'll wanna try to work with them when we can.
I agree.
And still.
The other houses, I guess the other question I have, Kevin, even though Frank Street, there's houses on the other side, they're over the limit, correct?
There's, there's actually, I think there's three duplexes on the south side of Frank Street. They are, they are. Well, certainly the two, the two westernmost for sure are. The third one is closest to Weekly, maybe within the five hundred feet. Of course, they've been there, I don't know how long. It's about, yeah, you're, it's roughly an additional eighty feet, eighty-five, actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, about eighty feet or so. So you're about two hundred and sixty feet from that hydrant to the rear of the building envelope for lot two.
Yeah. Y'all okay with requiring an easement?
We're requiring a, I don't know, we'll have to figure out the width, fifteen or ten, fifteen, twenty feet, whatever, an easement across lot one that has to be kept open for emergency access.
Yes.
To lot two. And they could put their driveway in that area or whatever and.
Just don't put, don't put their.
No fencing or.
Air unit in it, keep it open where it can go through and not, and not fence it.
Right.
What's the, what's the width of a fire line, twenty?
That's why I said probably on twenty feet.
It looks like the houses are on the minimum setback, which is ten.
Well, the building envelope is, yeah, that's, that's just the building envelope.
Okay.
So certainly the house could be set further to the west on lot one and have that be the driveway on that side.
That would probably be better access for fire department than Frank Street.
It'd be pretty narrow.
Getting in there.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow.
Cause all the trees hanging over it.
Right.
Kevin, just for my help, uh, if this was a, a duplex unit, would it be okay then?
Yeah, cause they were building one duplex on, cause they were only, could only, the lot sizes such, they could only do one.
Since the fact that it's two single family.
Two, it's a separate lot of, the subdivision regulations require.
But if they're joined, it's okay.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it's one, if it was one lot of record, you're building one house or you're building one duplex, it's not an issue because you're a hundred and seventy-seven feet to the fire hydrant. But lot two, based on road frontage, which is what the sub regs require, you're six hundred and thirty-five feet to the nearest along Frank Street.
And when you're talking about the easement, you're talking about easement for just lot number one, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, across lot one, twenty foot wide easement for emergency access, no structures, no fencing, nothing like that in that easement.
It cuts back their building envelope size.
By ten feet, yeah.
But it gets.
Has nothing to do with the neighbors, though, I mean, we don't have to do anything.
No, it's, it's all, it's all within their prop, it's all within their property and you're right, there's no.
And it just involves lot one. I think, uh, that's what I would recommend that we do, and if they have issues with it, then they'll just have to bring it back, which they'd have to do if we turned it down anyway. Do we have a motion?
I make, go ahead. I make most to approve, um, including the easement on lot one.
And that would be the side that's closest to the.
Be the east side of the lot, yeah.
The other Habitat.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second?
Did you have any notation there regarding fencing or anything? Does the easement handle that?
Well, I think, yeah, we'll require as part of the easement, when they put the easement on the plat, we'll, we'll put some warning, a note or something on the plat that says regarding no structures or, or fencing allowed inside that easement, yeah.
Does the eas, does easement need to go all the way through lot two as well? What if they put a fence up and then you can't?
That's what we're saying, they can't.
No, I'm talking about lot two.
To get to lot, yeah, y'all see what you're saying. If they get to the end of lot one, lot two puts a fence on the back property line, it just kinda defeats the purpose, yeah. So it may need to go at least to the, maybe to the building envelope or something. So that there's, you're getting to the house, not just the back property line, yeah.
That's fair. I'll amend the motion to include lot number two as well.
And second, they amend it.
All right. We all clear on what we're trying to do here? We have a motion, we have a second. We have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Okay, under a final plats number two, Hunter's Point Annex, section three, staff comments.
This is a final plat that was approved ten or eleven years ago. Uh, has never been recorded, never been any construction. And the approve, the original approval, um, there, there's two, basically two streets, um, uh, Shetland Drive and Excalibur Court. The original approval for Excalibur Court is much as what's shown and there's really no changes to that. But Shetland Drive was built, was approved as a, basically just a stub street, uh, to the adjoining property. Uh, and with the idea that it would eventually get extended into the adjoining development, which is Hidden Hills. There's a overall master plan for Hidden Hills that actually shows that being done. At least for part of this. So what they're requesting is to amend that final plat approval, um, and basically put a, a permanent cul-de-sac on Shetland Drive. However, it's, the, the right of way is, will be stubbed before that cul-de-sac is gonna go all the way to that adjoining property. So it probably would still allow for an extension if we ever wanted to. It's a pretty steep topography and may be difficult to do. But it was still allow for that in the, long term in the future. But it also would, obviously it's amending the right of way that would become public right of way because it's a cul-de-sac versus a straight stub street. So the lots aren't changing as far as the number of lots or anything like that as to why it had already been approved. It's fourteen lots, five point four acres. It's just, it's changing that road layout on the, on the one street, so. Guess that's all I got.
Question, where the cul-de-sac, uh, touches the adjacent property? It only touches at the radius.
Right.
So don't we need to require that that have the full fifty feet?
Yeah, you probably should and it wouldn't be that much. It's just the area that are very narrow anyway.
Right, right.
You could probably take in the hydrant. There's a hydrant there at the end of the road. Kind of, you start from that point and go across fifty feet. It's a very small area that we would be talking about.
I don't think it affects anything.
It's not gonna affect anything. Those lots are big, well over the minimum, so.
If they're ever connected, it makes it easier to connect.
Right.
If it's, doesn't, it doesn't make any difference, I don't think.
Right. So especially if we take, if we do that, we don't have an issue with this. This, in reality, because it, it may never be extended, it actually may be a pop more, a better layout just because it does provide that turnaround there on a long street. And so, um, versus a, some sort of temporary gravel turnaround or something, so.
So, so is, is this built or this isn't built?
This has not been built, no. They have, they have begun or about to begin on the Excalibur, those six lots that, extending that cul-de-sac. This is kind, they're kinda doing it in two different phases.
All right.
So.
So increasing the radius to fifty.
It wouldn't increase the radius, you're really just talking about.
You're just.
Yeah, you're basically just creating a small area of additional right of way there.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Connection to the adjacent property.
So we'd want to include the fifty-foot connection?
Yes, and you're probably.
It's a small area, a very small area.
Connection.
On either side of the, the end, yeah.
Yeah, and Kevin recommended that that, the hydrant be in there and go.
Yeah, that would kind of start at fifty feet there and go west or.
So I'll make a motion to improve to include the fifty-foot connection along with a hydrant within the fifty feet. Correct.
Right. And that would also allow for, if somebody ever wanted to build on a larger tract there, they would have access. Which wouldn't necessarily have without coming back for, and maybe having to deal with two separate property owners to acquire five feet of ten feet square feet. Okay? You all all right with that? Anything else?
We have a motion, but we don't have a second yet.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Questions? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. All right. Moving on, under new business, item D, site plans, number one, Home Depot, lots five and, Home Depot subdivision, lots five and seven, staff comments.
Proposed site plan for the development of Home Depot subdivisions, lot five and seven, consists of three point five six acres located along Isabella Lane. Property is currently zoned PUD and proposed use for this lot is retail and self-storage. Property is bound to the north and east by Home Depot, to the south by vacant tract of land, and to the west by Isabella Lane. Surrounding zoning consists of C two, as proposed, site may be accessed from Isabella Lane. Proposed square footage of vehicular use area, sixty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet. Required square footage of open space landscaping, six thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet, they're proposing three five thousand nine hundred and thirty. Total parking required, eighty-five spaces, they're proposing for eighty-six. Required handicap spacing, four spaces, and they are proposing for four. Landscape plants made by the applicant shows street trees and shrubs lining Isabella Lane and a variety of trees and shrubs planted throughout the development and around each of the buildings. Architecture elevations were submitted for the self-storage facility building, not for the retail building, but for the self-storage building. Primary materials of fiber cement and brick siding. Proposed site is not located in the hundred-year floodplain and future land use plan identifies proposed site as suitable for commercial development. Couple standard comments and staff comments, staff comment one, submit dumpster enclosure details and comment two, to submit architectural elevations for all buildings, which must meet design review manual and include proposed materials to be used on that building. With that, staff would recommend approval with comments.
There doesn't seem to be a lot of change from what we've already looked at here.
It's not, and they did, as part of the PUD approval, there were some kind of example buildings and there were some, some certain minimums as far as brick and stone and glass and whatnot. Mix of certain percentages as a part of the PUD required on that retail building. So we still don't have anything specific to that building, but they, we do have the PUD requirements that they would have to meet. So if you are okay with that, we could leave that for staff to review if you are comfortable with that. Or just make it a condition of the approval and then we would review it when they submit it, so. Because we do have some pretty specific guidance from the PUD approval that they would have to meet, so.
As I recall, it looked very much like an office building from the exteriors that we looked at from the examples and.
And, and very similar to other retail buildings that are in that area, yeah.
And this isn't a huge traffic generator for Rock Springs either.
Yeah, and we did have the, the self-storage and it is, it matches exactly what the PUD approval had.
Okay.
One other thing I do, we did, I talked about earlier today, there's still only lots five and seven, there actually has been a lot seven created already for Home Depot subdivision. It's where the gas station is. Originally that was on the overall Home Depot lot, and when they sold it, it was divided off, so there'll have to be like lot five and eight or something when they actually, when they, because they will have to resubdivide the property, the current boundary is, we go through the middle of the self-storage building, so they're going to have to change that and create a new lot. So that's just, we can take care of that with the plat, just an aside for them, so they know about it, but.
Okay, let's wish this to the commission.
Make a motion, we approve, we have staff comments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Site plans, item number two, Lee Crossing, phase two. proposed comments.
Sorry, proposed site plan for Lee Crossing, phase four, it's been updated. Phase four, sections one and two, consist of sixteen point four nine acres located at Harold Lee and Lee Victory Parkway. Property is currently zoned PRD and proposed uses for attached single-family townhomes. The property is bound to the north by a church, to the east by Lee Victory Parkway, to the south by Lee Crossing, phase one, to the west by Almaville Road and surrounding zoning consists of PRD from Lee Crossing, phase one, and Adelaide Park and R one. As proposed, site may be accessed from Harold Lee Lane and Almaville Road. Square footage of vehicular use area proposing one thousand three hundred, one thousand thirty-six, forty, sorry, one hundred and thirty-six thousand forty-six square feet. Required square footage of open space landscaping, thirteen thousand six hundred and four square feet, proposing for twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-seven. Total parking required, three hundred and twenty-four spaces, they're proposing for four hundred and six. Required handicap spacing is not required for this type of development, townhomes are treated as single-family residents, so handicap spacing is not required. They are proposing for five around the amenity area as well. Landscape plants made by the applicant shows street trees and shrubs lining Almaville and a variety of shrubs planted around each unit. Architecture elevations made by the applicant show primary materials on the front elevations of brick, stone, and vinyl, which are consistent with the PUD books middle. Proposed site is not located in the hundred-year floodplain and future land use plan identifies proposed site as suitable for office, retail, multifamily residential development. A couple standard comments, all the grading plan comments, one, two, three, have been addressed. Staff comment one has been addressed as well as staff comment four. Staff comment two, submit plat showing all the right of way dedication and public easements. Staff comment three, show lane stor, storage hundred feet, foot storage and a hundred foot taper on Almaville Road. Staff comment five, please show bus stop to meet zoning ordinance requirements, one was shown on the updated site plan, however, it should be placed outside of the public right of way. And we added an additional comment to update the parking number to reflect the actual number of spaces on the site plan for the cover page. Staff would recommend approval with these comments.
What's gone away?
Uh, staff comments one and four. Yep, grading plan comments one, two, and three.
Yeah, well, there was an update, I talked to Tom a little bit later this afternoon. Comment number three can be taken off as well. They are, the, the traffic improvements they are showing are consistent with their traffic studies, so that can be, that can be removed as well. So really just looking at.
They got the standard, no grading.
The four standards and then two five, two, and then the, I guess the number five is it was amended, and then to show the correct number of spaces, of parking spaces.
Okay. Do you all have questions?
This is real consistent with the product that's there already, is it? It's pretty much the same thing.
Very, very similar.
Maybe somewhat improved, so. Make a motion to approve, staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Item four, under site plans, Shanks and Associates, staff comments.
What about, you want to do number three now?
Oh, I saw that one, excuse me. Let's go back to item number three, Rock Springs Road Town Homes. The engineer has requested a few minutes to discuss this project, but not necessarily request us to approve it at this time. And if it's all right with the commission, take two, three, four minutes, please, sir.
I think I just need two or three minutes, I had a few things I wanted to point out. This is a one point seven five acre tract along Rock Springs Road. It's properly zoned for the, the use that we're proposing here, and this is something we've been working on for some time. In December of this year, we conducted thirteen borings, geotechnical report on the site, which that was finished up in January. This was before you before, it's a twenty-four unit proposed plan, but it's been modified and that was denied, but there were, there were several issues at that time. And we're working through the issues with staff. One thing I mentioned to, to the staff before the meeting is, on the way to the meeting, my wife called and said, I got a package from Smyrna, it was the utility department with their final redline, water and sewer comments. So I know Mark Parker's comments I want to be addressed before we recommend for approval. But I think there's some things here that you may not understand looking at this, and I wanted to explain them to you. As you see, the pavement, what, what we're going to be doing on this project is cutting the ground surface near Rock Springs Road, the lower elevation area, and filling to create the area where the parking and the townhomes are out of the floodplain. As it laying currently sits, it's all under the five twenty-seven foot contour, which is all in the hundred-year floodplain. The entire one point seven five acres is in the floodplain. As a part of this project, we would propose changing the grade to take out, the parking areas and the townhomes would be removed from the floodplain through a CLOMRF, that's a conditional letter map provision, a submittal to FEMA, which I've done many of those, but this project would require that. So it'll have to have their approval as well, once you've approved the site plan before any work could begin. Underneath the, the, the big thing I want to get to is there's an elevated slab at the lower ten foot of the parking area, closest to Rock Springs Road. And I, the best way I can try to get you to understand this would be, on, on one sheet, there is a three O, there's a, a section view. But if you were playing kickball, kids down in that ditch and grass area, they could actually kick a ball underneath that outside wall that says row of columns. That's an elevated slab and there's grass under there. And the reason for that is, when you do a CLOMRF, you have to balance cut and fill, and Tom Rose is going to see to it that I do that, and he's hitting some calculations, we've been discussing this. In order for me to get the cut and fill to balance, I had to be cutting under that area as well. And then to get the twenty-four foot I needed for the vehicle turnaround to back out of the parking spaces have enough. So we basically have a low area and a high area, on ten foot there, you can see the two lines and it denotes the edge of pavement, and then you'll see another line that labels it the retaining wall. So underneath that parking area, it's dirt where the buildings and the parking is, but that last ten foot of slab is actually an elevated slab with concrete columns every eight feet on the outside edge. Are you following what I'm saying? If you like, I can point to the drawing there, walk up here.
If that.
Sheet C three point O, the grading sheet, actually there's a.
Shows what he's talking about, it kind of is section view, so you can.
Like you're looking through it.
Really, that's all I wanted to point out to you today, we're addressing all staff comments. We just received the water and sewers final comments, I guess, we had addressed them all, but we got new comments this evening in the mail. So we'll be planning to bring this back in May and I hope to have staff's recommendation for approval with all their items having been properly addressed before the meeting. So that's, that's where we are, I just, it's a, it's a little different and I appreciate the opportunity to explain the, the challenges that I wanted to address, thank you.
Yes, so technically then is this a withdrawal or?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we, we wanted to defer to the next meeting or withdraw to the next meeting.
So we're, we're not going to take action.
You don't need to take action.
Okay, that was just our procedural thing.
And we'll, we'll resubmit by the deadline for next month, thank you.
Well, now we'll go to item number four, Shanks and Associates, staff comments.
Proposed site plan for Shanks and Associates consists of two point eight two acres located at Enan Springs Road West and Mason Tucker Drive. Property is currently zoned PUD and proposed uses for attached single-family homes and commercial building. Property is bound to the north and east by single-family residential homes, to the south by Mason Tucker Drive, to the west by Enan Springs Road. Surrounding zoning consists of R one, R three, R four, C four, and PUD, which is a mixed-use development. As proposed, site may be accessed from Enan Springs Road and Mason Tucker Drive. Square footage of vehicular use area proposing thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet, which would require square footage landscaping of three thousand two hundred and eighty-two square feet, they're proposing for four thousand three hundred and ten square feet. Total parking required sixty-four spaces and they are proposing for eighty-one, required handicap space of one and they are proposing for three. Landscape plants made by the applicant shows variety of trees and shrubs surrounding the commercial property along the border of the property. Architecture elevations have been submitted by the applicant, however, there's a discrepancy between the renderings that have been submitted and the actual architectural elevations that were submitted in detail. Flood, proposed floodplain, the proposed site is not located within the hundred-year floodplain and future land use plan identifies proposed site as suitable for medium-density, single-family residential development. Couple standard comments as well as grading plan comments, staff comment one has been addressed. Staff comment two, submit a full-size set of the rear and side elevations, which must meet design review. Staff comment three, submit elevations for the commercial building. Staff comment four, the plat must be recorded to combine lots, and staff comment five, the proposed units appear to be smaller than the approved PUD would allow, though the square footage shown is same, provide additional details such as floor plans that meet, that show the square footage as required by the PUD being mapped. Staff would recommend approval with these comments.
But the numbers that you're reading are off from the numbers that we have. As far as your comment one, comment two, they don't match what we're looking at.
It's almost, he, what he's looking at is the staff report that has the map and all that on it.
They're looking at someone's got a picture in it.
I can see where they're confusing, yeah, I can see where there's confusion, apologize for that, we, we're in a hurry Thursday, try to get these done. But, so I apologize for that confusion. But what, that's what he's looking at is the two-page report that has the map and all that on it. This is a site you all, or the planning commission has looked at several times, some of you probably do remember it. It's been zoned for several years.
Are we just looking at the residential units today or?
It's really all of it. I mean, the, it's, it's all one development. The commercial building, it's, it's all part of the site plan, so. They have amended it. It is different in the sense that they have shown some additional parking on the Mason Tucker side. Previous approval just had the main road going through the development, which that's a private road, but it's the main road. And then the units on either side of it, the twenty units, they have basically have moved that, or have added that park in there to provide some more parking in addition to the garages and the driveway areas. So, for the development.
Did we require that, or?
No, we did not. That was something...
Probably a really good idea, but...
Not a bad idea, but it's not something that was required with the PUD approval, no. Um, the, the units themselves are, at least the footprints are smaller than what was originally approved. They were nineteen hundred and thirty-eight and nineteen hundred and eighty-four square feet units. They were wider with downstairs bedrooms. They were, they were, was not restricted to fifty-five and up, or, or anything like that, but they were, the original developer was looking at that market for certain. That was certainly the concept at the time. Some of those, some of these are still meeting that. Some of them, at least the footprints are smaller, there's, their labels are... Looking at the computer screen, I can't see the numbers.
I was thinking when this came up.
Nineteen hundred, some of them are nineteen hundred and twenty, but that's a twenty-four by forty footprint. So the second floor would have to be the same square footage as the bottom floor, to let them be, be that square footage, which might be difficult to do. Some of them may even be a little bigger, at least the footprint would allow for something bigger. But that's the one. And it really, it's only, I guess that's four, four units on the, which they're labeled two and three and six and seven are the ones I'm talking to. Twenty-four by fifty-two units can probably, that's an additional twelve by twenty-four area on the bottom floor, so it might be achievable. And they are narrower, they were all thirty-two foot wide units pretty much before. Some of these are twenty-four instead of thirty-two.
Before, they were all about thirty-two?
Thirty-two. And, and, and in fact, that's how they were able to achieve the room to put that parking lot at the end, because they shrunk some of the units on the, that side by eight feet in width.
Then there were more units before, wasn't it?
Twenty-eight or thirty-two.
There was a request to amend the PUD to go to twenty-seven units, and that was, was denied. This is still, this is the twenty units, yeah.
Is this somewhere somewhere west standing across the street now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I...
Similar to what's going on.
About there, or on Enan Springs.
Oh, there's some duplexes, you won't see them built there. Yeah, these are, these are quad, quadruplex units. Those are two units for building them over there.
I'm trying to remember, you might have refreshed my memory a little bit, but I remember when they came in to amend it, and we did not allow that. They were trying to squeeze more lots in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they may, did we, on that, when it came back amended, they was even taking out the commercial, maybe? Or is that...
No, they, they still have the commercial, but there's nothing been changed.
Well, I'm thinking about, we've seen a couple of different forms of this, so...
They used to be commercial on the front.
It still is.
It still does.
Well, the one he's talking about had the live-work kind of thing, remember?
Yeah.
That's years ago, that's a good memory.
But this, this is still, yeah, the forty-eight hundred square feet commercial building, with like a C4 type uses allowed as a part of the PUD, that's still there. Parkings, separate parking lot, all that, for that, so.
What's the discrepancy in the elevation? Did I hear him mention that when he? What kind of discrepancies?
The drawings...
I've got some drawings here, but I'm wondering what the discrepancy is.
It's this, the, the, kind of this rendering kind of shows one thing, and if you look at the, the pages, it's different.
It goes really from a flat look to a townhome look, doesn't it?
Right. So that's... And all we have really are front elevations, we don't have side or rear. It's pretty much almost all brick, was what was approved before with the PUD. So, something similar, actually, to what the rendering shows. Very, very close to that. But the elevations show still some brick, but also some stone, and siding, and more of a mix, and not all brick, so.
I know originally when we looked at this, and I know Chairman Tim, some of you guys were here when we did this, I think our whole mindset behind it was to supply more of a senior-style living. And this just, to me, has gone back to a townhome-style living. That's an opinion.
Do we know exactly what they're, whether they're a single-car garage, double-car garage, what they submitted as architecturals, or what, is what's going to be built? What's...
I mean, like I said, we've got two different things, so. Some of the units are too narrow, it'd be pretty tough to have a two-car garage.
Or even a twenty-four, it'll be...
Tight to get a garage, period.
Yeah, it'd be a...
Are all of them supposed to have garages?
That was, as part of the PUD approval, yeah, they all had garages, yeah. And they're, and they are still, I mean, they're not, they have the driveway areas that are there in front of each unit, and then they're adding the parking at the bottom, but...
I think one of our concerns is parking.
Right, and they, and they are, they try to address that with that parking lot, for some gas, parking, and that sort of thing, right?
Keeping safe for your emergency vehicles and so forth.
Right.
Is it the same as what we approved, or essentially the same as what we approved in the PUD, for the PUD approval? Are you comfortable with that?
I mean, the number of units are the same, yes. The, the, I don't, I like the addition of the parking, I think that's a, probably a positive thing. But that was my main concern, was the units themselves, and again, with a couple of different, the renderings and the elevations are a little different, and knowing exactly what you're talking about. That's why we had our comment, uh, number five under our report, was just to clarify that. They may be here and can answer some of those questions, but... I mean, essentially, the layout is, is, is the same as what we had approved as part of the PUD. The, the units themselves are the question...
The layout's fine, the extra parking, we all agree, if we think is a, is probably a positive.
Right.
Do we know, if we approve it, do we know what we're approving from the architectural standpoint?
I think we, I think there's still a question there, yeah, because what we got, a couple of different things, so we really don't know exactly what we're approving architecturally. Right.
And part of what is submitted and part of what is described is, what they say they're building and what you're shown that they're building are different, right?
Right. Because you got some two-car garages, and then they have room for two-car garages on some of those units. But then you got some single cars, too. And twenty-four feet in width, maybe we could only have a single car at best, yeah. And have a front door.
I think one of the things that endeared me to this the most was, at the time we looked at it, um, it kind of felt like we were really going to meet the needs of some senior living, that we have absolutely almost zero of in town, that people can buy and go live in, in a flat style. We're, in my business, we're losing people to Murfreesboro all the time, because we don't have that product. And I thought that was, to me, I thought that's what this was going to be. So seeing these new elevations surprises me a little bit, that's all.
They, they were, I think they were...
You want to speak to the elevations and the thought process there?
Please give your name and...
We, I don't know, I'm sure...
Name and address, please.
Blake Catherine, my address?
Yeah.
Yes.
Two zero three two Delaware Drive in Nolansville, Tennessee.
And you are the owner, or represent the owner, or who?
Owner, uh, and represent the other owner.
Okay, fine, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I think we tried to stay with the original spirit of this development. Y'all probably looked at this corner of land on a plat more than you've ever wanted to. But the, from the original twenty, from my understanding, that I think was approved nine, ten years ago, and I think this thing's been through many readings between then and now, was, as Kevin had mentioned, senior living, masters down, and kind of a, a mix being with the commercial up front. When we first looked at this project, or when I kind of got my hands on the project to kind of look at and change some things and what we wanted to do, because I know at some point in time, within the last year, y'all looked at one that was twenty-seven and had them really crunched down. I think they're only like nineteen feet wide, and they were trying to put as many in there as, as possible. And I think in the meantime, between then and now, Smyrna's gone and has some water, water control, new requirements that have been put in place. And one of the other things that was really important to us, because we're in the middle of doing a forty-seven unit project in Nashville, is that parking. Because of, kind of the way people treat garages nowadays, and those driveways being so short, and it only being one street in and out, we did not want a problem, everybody parking on the street, they're just too close together. So, taking into account some new needed detention, and wanting that parking at the end, to kind of keep that street from just becoming too cluttered. Instead of going with the thirty-two foot wide and the thirty-eight foot wide, which, from what I looked at, was the original plan, I think done ten years ago, we were able to put in twenty-fours and thirty-twos, and I believe in everything, we'll be able to still keep a master down, in all of them. The only one I'm concerned about that we're, we're, we're just working through, what, how big masters are going to be and that kind of thing, just to make sure they're functional, are those four that back up to Enan Springs. The reason we kept those four a little bit shorter than the end units, if you look at them over there, is just to give a little bit of architectural appeal from the Enan Springs side of the road. Obviously, that's going to be where the majority of the traffic is going to be coming through. And I really, to be dead honest with you, don't know what the original requirements were, as far as exterior elevations from a PUD guideline standpoint. The, what I looked at, and I, and what I talked with some about was, you know, it was kind of a one level, and then the second story was essentially built in the roof line. I think what, um, the planner and y'all have looked at as far as some discrepancy between the two is, is I kind of gave some examples of, not only some with, with the roof line, the second floor built in the roof line, and some with the second floor as a normal elevation, but also some with a mix, where the end units, that second floor's kind of built in the roof line, and then the middle units, where y'all had mentioned, that second floor needs to be as big as the first floor, in order to get the, the square footage that we need, show a two-story elevation. I think we can make it work either way, whatever the planning commission desires, as far as that goes. One thing we, it might be good to give some comments toward that we could, we could use as far as before we submit, um, final elevations on this plan is, what the commission's desire is for that, that back wall facing Enan Springs. To me, that's the one that, probably from an architectural standpoint, needs to be the most buttoned up, as it's probably going to be the face of the project in the beginning. As far as the commercial goes, we really don't have any plans for that at this point. And we could label that future development and come back and submit some renderings, or submit architectural plans for whatever that commercial building may be. At that point, we come in for site plan review on the commercial point, I don't know. You can help me there, but I don't have any plans yet for the commercial at all. We're packed, bored, ready to go on the residential side. But hopefully, that kind of speaks to where we are from the originals, what I understood the original spirit of this development to be, and kind of how we've tried to meet those needs, and add a little bit to hopefully make it a better product in the end.
All right. Do you all have questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Kevin, what do we need to, I'm not sure what we're, we're being asked to approve.
Well, I mean, the site plan is in front of you, just have the commercial, I mean, we could somehow, if we wanted to take that off or something, through a condition, tell them that has to come back later. So, I mean, but I think the, for me, I guess from a comfort level, I think I would rather have a little bit more consistency, or know exactly what the architectural elevations are, or what they're going to actually be for the townhouse units, I think. I think that's...
Furlough thirty days and ask for the, the details to come in.
I think that's probably the, you know, if that's something, to me, based on your discussion, that seems to be the main concern that you all have. I think everything else, I think is, was some positive changes. They're fine on everything else, especially if you take the commercial out of it all and just call it future development, because we don't have architectural elevations for that yet either. But deferring it thirty days and, and let them firm up exactly what they want to do, and maybe some floor plans and that sort of thing for those smaller units that we have the main concern about. You know, we know exactly what type of, what they're looking at for as garages.
How many there are, exactly where they are. Answer your questions as to, one is shown at this size of diff, the others are shown at another size, and clear up all those questions.
Clear up those questions and show, you know, you know, the garages, materials, all those kind of things, yeah.
I would certainly prefer that. And I, I do have issues approving without architecturals. We went through a lot of work with design review. The bottom line is, if we don't have architecturals, which are required for this meeting, then it's really difficult for us to assume what we are approving and what we really end up with. So I, I really think folks need to work a little bit harder on getting the, the architecturals to us.
Kevin, if not for the commercial in here, if we just hypothetically cut the commercial out, would we not be looking at pretty much an R-six type of product here?
We certainly, yeah, the twenty units is, I mean, I'm not saying you cut it out, I'm just saying from the site plan part of it, you, they would have to come back, it was still, the zoning would still be in place for it.
We're requiring the, the commercial to be brought back for us to...
If, if, if he's not, he doesn't have, because in reality, if a year goes by, expires anyway, if you didn't have plans for it anytime soon.
That's my question, I mean, it's, it's, it's an R-six product without the need for commercial. I know it's in here.
Right.
But hypothetically, you take that out, we're looking at what we would see in an R-six zone somewhere.
Yeah, but if you take the commercial out...
Right.
If the zoning doesn't change, it doesn't...
I understand.
He doesn't get more land, put more town...
It just parallels what R-six would look like.
Certainly, yeah, the R-six, they're quadruplexes, and certainly that's an R-six zoning for that piece of it, yeah.
I, I thought I had my mind on something different, that's, I thought when we talked about this originally, that this was more of a, I, I may be confused, but I thought it was more of a senior-style living. He mentions masters down, and that's not, as I recall, it was going to be flat-level living, and that's what we were after.
I mean, I think they did, they did, I think there were going to be some two-story, some of the units were going to be two-story, but it was, just as he described it, the upstairs was going to be maybe a, a third bedroom and a bonus room kind of thing, and not really...
It's sort of evolved, is my point.
It has evolved, some of them.
And Mark, we, when we talked about it, there was a lot of conversation about the senior product.
I, I compel anybody that's interested in doing that or listening out there, that if somebody can bring a senior product to the town of Smyrna and do a good job with it, there's going to be a line. There'll be a line waiting for it.
All right. On this one, then, what's, what's the, what's the wishes of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to defer.
I'm gonna make a motion to defer.
To get those issues that Kevin brought up clarified, and, uh, all right. Do I have a sec, a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? The, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Motion carried.
Item number five, uh, Time Market on Old Nashville Highway.
Yeah, this is-
Staff comments.
Yeah, this is a site plan, it's an amended site plan, it has an approval, already existing approval, obviously the building's there. Uh, C-two zoning, um, it was approved in June of two thousand sixteen, had fifty-three parking spaces there. One of the conditions of the approval was that no more than four hundred square feet is allowed as a restaurant, and that there will be no outside seating. Um, that condition was put in place to allow ninety-eight hundred square feet of retail space, which requires forty-nine spaces, and then the four hundred square feet of restaurant, which requires four, so that gets you to the fifty-three. Um, the site plan has been amended to have Nashville's fifty-eight spaces. Um, they are proposing, the, the plan that was originally, we had a revision brought in last week, but the original proposal had a twenty-eight hundred square feet of restaurant space. Um, the parking, the fifty-eight spaces wouldn't support that with the, if you had twenty-eight hundred square feet of restaurant, that's twenty-eight spaces, and only at least twenty-five for the rest of the building, so, um, the site plan approval, the approved floor plan did have eight, basically eight tables with four seats. So, I would recommend, and, and they have amended the plan to show this. Um, up to twelve hundred square feet of the building and no more than twenty-four tables be allowed as a restaurant use, which would mean twelve spaces for the restaurant, two forty-six for the remaining nine thousand square feet of space. Um, they have amended their plan to show that. They have also taken care of comment number six regarding the width. There are, part of the main area that they're picking up, parking, are some parallel spaces to the side. They are also, as part of that, there's a kind of a sidewalk that connects the front and the back. Uh, and landscape area, that would, would be going away to create a, a drive aisle, to keep the twenty-two-foot drive aisle connecting the front and back parking lots, so that's still gonna be there. Um, and then just adding the four parallel spaces on the side. So, essentially, it's an amended approval just to allow for a, um, larger area of restaurant space and then adding the, the additional parking, so. Okay?
Is this the same place where we already have more tables inside than they're supposed to have inside the store?
They had more than the eight, yes, yeah, and so, and we, and we have talked with them about that, and I know they, it, it did get corrected. At least at one, it was correct, at one point, it was corrected to get back down to the eight tables. Uh, I don't believe in that recently, but, um.
So, so you're, you're proposing no more than twenty-four tables-
Right.
With twelve parking places.
It's a hundred, it's one per hundred square feet.
One per hundred square feet, yeah, it's one per hundred square, it's twelve hundred square feet. We had basically, it was four hundred square feet with the eight tables. So, I've just made the numbers work and it kept the same ratio there, I guess. Four, four hundred square feet, eight tables, twelve hundred square feet, multiplied by three each of them, and got to that point, so. And there will be the additional forty-six spaces. It's essentially gonna be all, there's not gonna be any more rental ar- areas available for rent, I guess. Uh, they had some spaces, the original plan had the market and the restaurant, as well as about three spaces that, that could be leased out.
Were those interior walls, were they in place?
No.
Not in the, you talking about the ones separating the rentals?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Please give your name and address, please.
Royce Johnson, fifty-four hundred Luz Court, Murfreesboro. Uh, this is the owner B. I'm kinda trying to help my wife's translator, so we wanted to clear up some English translation portion, so I'm just kind of a guy trying to help out here. This is the engineer with the drawing, so if I don't have all the answers, he's right behind me. Uh, basically, the walls in between the rental spots, that, that, that would separate those two isn't there. There is the one wall between the market and the other buildings, and, uh, uh, but that's just that, that one wall there. But the other two units are kinda open units. And, and what the idea is, is to allow more, uh, space, more usable space for the restaurant, create the parking, so, uh, there's never been a parking issue there, uh, with overflow or anything like that, we just wanna make better use. The original plan had four hundred square feet, by going to twelve hundred, it allows them to go up to twenty-four tables. Uh, their business, you know, needs more than eight tables, if this is the best use for the facility is what we're trying to get to.
Kevin, do we have a grease trap on this building? I don't think we did originally, 'cause it was a market.
Um, if there isn't one now, though, I mean, they'll have to have, there may be one, I honestly don't know the answer to that, and I don't know if Mike does or not, either.
Well, if it's gonna-
It'll be required to have one, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, there was a fairly large grease trap required, I think, uh, on the original plan, so there is one. I wanted to add one comment to address your, your question about the tenant spaces, and this drawing shows it. If you see the last space at the, to the far left, uh, is a storage space, and the city did require and, and submitted to Steve Smith, the building official, a firewall be drafted to separate the market and from that one space. So, to answer your question about tenant spaces there, there are not three or four tenant spaces now, there's really two. One's a storage area and then the restaurant market area, so I, I hope that helps.
So, it's what's shown here on our drawing, it's what is in existence today?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That storage, is that part of your, uh, calculations?
Yeah, well, the basically, and we, and we counted that as basically, basically, everything is like a commercial complex, the one, one for two hundred, whether it's called storage or the pantry area or whatever, we basically treated it like, like it would be part of the retail area, which is, 'cause every market has a storage area in the back, you know, in, for the warehousing, and so, that's just, we kinda treated it all the same.
And I assume we could do our approval where we require this remain a storage area so it doesn't become a retail or restaurant in the, in the future?
Right.
And, uh, where, where it couldn't be rented out without any other approval?
Right.
And that would-
Kevin, unless, unless something's changed, uh, on the right side of the building where it says eleven-foot concrete sidewalk, uh, it used to be a fenced area.
I think it is, I think that fence is still there, yeah.
Yeah, you, you talking about to the, not the O'Reilly side, but the other side?
The other side.
Yeah, there's a fence still there.
Right, I guess this is a sidewalk, so, um, I don't know if there's any doors from the building to the sidewalk, 'cause I didn't look at that close, but I know there's a fence up, so.
There, there is a door that goes out of the building on that side, right there inside the fence line.
Okay. So, I guess what, what I'm saying is there needs to be some restriction that that can't be used for tables.
The, the original approval did have no outdoor seating, and so.
And that's, that's still the, the same, it's not for outdoor seating.
Wasn't it brought from twelve feet to six feet originally?
Yeah, they wanted it bigger.
Yes.
Yeah. We sized it down.
I think Trey caught that, as I recall.
Yeah.
Might be wrong about that.
On, on number five, Kevin, it says it's approved for eight four-seat tables.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the new proposal is twenty-four tables, but there's no seating there. We need to specify how many seats are gonna be, 'cause you could put eight-foot tables in.
Uh, with it, it's, it's four seats per table?
We need to specify.
And you can certainly do that, yeah, twelve, you can put twenty-four four-seat tables, we can do that, yeah.
You know, the issue that we have here is that the approval that was granted before was not followed. And that is, is why our questions are such tonight.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So. We're gonna be specific. The storage area has to remain storage area.
Right.
For the, for the market and restaurant.
For the market and restaurant.
Right.
Uh, the, uh, I think that's, all right. What was the question on the outside sidewalk?
Just that they-
Make sure that there's no outdoor seating.
Well, we understand that, custom.
Yeah, it was still just, that condition would remain, yeah. It, it was a part of the original approval and they could just, we'll specify it again, but just, no outdoor seating.
See if it was six feet or eleven feet or whatever it is, that's what's required it be and-
No outdoor seating.
And no outdoor seating.
Right.
The, in other words, the, basically, we, they can provide for seating for?
Ninety-six people, ninety-six chairs, rather.
Yes, sir.
That would give them a little bit of flexibility on the number of tables.
How many tables?
Twenty-four tables.
Twenty-four tables.
Be ninety-six.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So, if we capped it at ninety-six and he wanted to put an eight-foot table, we would still cap the seating at ninety-six.
Right, right.
Which would allow them a little bit of flexibility, but we capped the seating.
We appreciate that, too.
We, yeah, we can do that, 'cause they may wanna have some two-seat tables or whatever, yeah. Yeah, ninety-six seats is fine.
Okay.
How many square feet in the market?
Sir?
How many square feet in the market?
Yeah, they could.
The total building is like ten, it's ten-two, the total building is ten-two, and you got a couple thousand kinda for storage and pantry, so that's eighty, that's not ten, eighty-two, about seven thousand.
Not counting your storage and your pantry area.
And the restaurant area, right.
Is, is part of that the, I would assume where you're, where you're cooking at? Is that part of that ten-two area, I mean, uh, part of the, I guess, the seven thousand?
Yeah.
So, all of it's not necessarily market?
No.
Part of that is a kitchen or something, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and you have, yeah, I think the pantry, that is the storage more for the restaurant, and then the, the other storage is more for the market, part of it.
And, and the, guys, I'm just, to be honest, the reason I'm standing here is my wife's a translator for the language. So, there, there was some, some disconnects of saying, yes, I understand, and we didn't understand. So, you know, I'm just here as, as, as his friend, working with Chet here, trying to get the building right, but trying to follow all codes, make sure he understands codes, and we do the best for the business, you know. Uh, I don't think there was any intentional wrongdoing, I just think there were some things that, that, you know, we, me and my wife tried to step in and, and help with the communication, that's all.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, let me, let me go back to my, my question. So, the market, how much is their mar, how big is the market if we take the restaurant, I mean, not the restaurant, but the kitchen, and take it out of that, it sounded like it, we were adding the kitchen as part of the market, is that correct?
Well, it's, it's part of the square foot calculation that you calculate your parking needs, so.
Right.
The, the way we calculate the parking needs that are shown was, as Kevin recommended we do, is we only took twelve hundred square foot out for restaurant, which had the one to a hundred, uh, square feet ratio for parking requirement, twelve. The whole rest of the building, nine thousand square feet, is considered retail, which required five per thousand. So, uh, we did not lower the parking requirement for the storage area, we considered it all retail, except for the twelve hundred for the restaurant, that's how we did the parking counts. And that required fifty-seven spaces, and we have fifty-eight provided in the plan, so, thank you.
All right. Based on the way this is presented, essentially referencing ninety-six seats in the restaurant. If they wanted to put ninety-six, uh, the seats all over the place, I don't guess we're gonna measure square footage, it's just-
Really more than ninety-six seats, yeah.
Uh, you feel like it meets our, our requirements as presented?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with it, especially if we have the condition regarding the storage area remaining storage, and then the no outdoor seating, I feel comfortable with, with the plan.
And you're gonna check as far as that outside sidewalk as to whether or not it was supposed to be six feet instead of eleven feet on the end of the building?
Yeah.
I think there was that question on that.
I'll check on that, yeah.
I assume it's been built as eleven, but, but if it was required to be six, then I feel like it oughta come out.
I'll take a look at that and see what was on the, the original, yeah.
And that would get us back into compliance. All right?
One, one more question.
Uh, with this addition on the restaurant, are we still okay with the handicap parking?
Yeah, 'cause that's based on the building's square footage and all, and the number of spaces that are parts, that, that's not an issue.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
And everything else that came up?
Everything else staff has noted, yes.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Motion carried.
One of those.
One, give it to Mark. Second, one of those. Give it to Mark.
Mark, Mark.
Can I say one last thing? Thank you, everybody. Kevin, give it to Mark for help.
Sure.
Everybody, and I really appreciate the help.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Under site plans number six, Topper America, staff comments?
The proposed site plan for Topper America Phase Seven consists of three-point-six acres located at seven-seven-three-five Florence Road. Property is currently zone I-three, and the proposed use is for a stamping facility, which is allowed by right in the I-three zoning district. Property is bound to the north and west by Nissan, to the east by Florence Road, and to the south by Steel Technologies. Surrounding zoning consists of R-three and I-three. As proposed, the site may be accessed from the existing Ingris and Egris off Florence Road. They are not proposing to add any vehicular use area, which in turn does not require the additional landscaping square footage. Um, currently required to have nine-nine spaces, and they have a hun- one hundred and one existing spaces for parking, and the handicap spaces remain the same as well. Landscape plan not required from the applicant. Phase seven is not proposing to add any additional vehicular use area, thus the reason that landscape is not required for this addition. Architecture elevations meant by the applicant show a replication of the existing building with a primary material of metal. Proposed site is not located within the hundred-year floodplain, and future land use plan identifies proposed site as suitable for heavy industrial development. And there's two standard comments, uh, no staff comments nor grading comments, and staff would recommend approval with the standard comments.
Is there any other room for future development on this lot?
There's additional, I think, two more phases.
Maybe two more? Okay.
Two more.
I couldn't remember how big the site was.
They're probably already talking about that.
It is, they, they've already been approved, went through, and they're, kind of begun construction on an addition, and this is a sec, the second addition, and I think there's room for maybe two more of similar square footage.
Okay. All right. Have a motion.
Approve with staff comments.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. And April bond review.
We actually don't have anything.
Well, go pretty quick then.
Yeah.
Any other comments, any other business come before the commission?
I don't have anything.
We stand adjourned.